Thank you. Mr. Chair, at this point in time, I have 7:30. We have, hello? We have eight members present, which means that, and one not regular member, which means Bree will sit in as a voting member, and David's dead. And Nick, unless somebody has to accuse themselves, then will be our auxiliary for the evening. So you are free to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Okay, great, thanks Hank. Call to order, meeting of the City of Huntington Woods Zoning Board of Appeals. Today is October 11th, 2021. It is a little bit after 7:30 PM. First thing is, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thanks Joe. Thanks Mike. All a favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the August 9th, 2021 meeting. Looking for a motion to approve the August 9th, 2021 meeting.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thanks Joe, all a favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. So Hank, now that David's here, Nick and Bree are...
Now that David is here, Nick and Bree are back to auxiliary. And then if one, if somebody has to step down or there's a conflict of interest, then first Bree will step in, second Nick will step in.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. Moving on to our first appeal. This is a matter of an appeal from Heller &amp; Associates on behalf of the Frankel family. At 8251 Lincoln for a variance to the maximum house size, section 40-4.03, R-1A through R-1E, one family districts, D, dimensional requirements, schedule of regulations which allows for 3,675 square feet. They're asking for a total of 4,114 square feet, which is 439 more than what's allowed. And someone from Heller &amp; Associates and Frankel here?
Yes. Dominic Abate from Heller &amp; Associates, and I have Dale and Patty Frankel for the whole arm of here.
Great. If you want to step up to the...
You could stay there if you're comfortable with that.
Okay, that's fine. If you wouldn't mind, just for the details of the request, if Hank could present that for us?
If you'd like, Mr. Chair, I can go first and then Mr. Abate can fill in the blanks. And that way they'll know what's going on.
That's fine, thanks Hank.
Okay, so again, what you have is a 439 square foot more than allowed to ask for the maximum house size. The first condition which they have to satisfy is especially unique conditions and circumstances which are peculiar to the land structure building involved, which are not generally applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Here you have kind of an interesting situation. And what I'll do is I'm going to shut the light just a little bit up here so that, so that it might be a little bit easier for you to see. So here's one of the things that you see is you see a lot here that's zoned in R1C, but it fits the zoning for R1B. If you could take a look at the size and the configuration here on the lot, you'll see that, here we go, that this is the corner here. The house actually fronts off of Lincoln. It's planted off the side street, which is the narrower part of it. So the house is situated a little bit awkwardly. Now, the interesting part about this is, is that this gives the lot, which is normally at the back, the house which is normally situated to the back, their area of concentration here is on the side, because it's a technical front is over here. So what they're looking to do is they're looking to put an enclosed lanai with a room above it. And as a result, that's where you come up with the additional 439 more square feet. Part of the interesting thing with this is, is that you have a situation where the house right here is already set up for this, set up for the back. This leaves this is the only place you can practically add onto it. It's within the setbacks for the side yards. It's within the lot coverage. It's within everything except for the maximum house size. So the size of the lot is the one thing that I wanted to bring up. The other thing for this particular one is that if you go to two, the variances will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. The plan received no objections at the planning commission's site plan review and was granted, subject to the zoning board of appeals, for the variance by unanimous vote. We did have two favorable communications from the residents in the notice area, and I did include those in your packet. So what I'd like to do is kind of show you the plan. I'll have to get this to go. So what you're looking at here... Hold on just one second. Okay, so what you have here is, if you're looking at it from the side street, this is what you're seeing as the front. This is what you're seeing over here. Maybe it's easier if I use this. This is what you're seeing as the add-on. This room down here, which is not counted in the calculations, is a lanai. So if it was by then of itself, it would count as lot coverage, but it doesn't count as square footage for the house, because it's not a four-season porch. This area here, which fits right above the foundation that they looked at, is what's considered, is what they're considering for that. So right here is why you're getting a substantive difference in the lot, or in the maximum house size coverage. This right here is demo. I don't want to get to the demo. Let me give you the proposed lower level plan. So this is the area that we're looking at over here. That shows the basement. This shows the area coming into the house over here. This is the main level floor plan. But what I want to show you is the upper level, and here's the reasons for that. This area here is the area that you looked at and you saw from the front of the house. So part of the reason is, is that you have this area here underneath a roof tie-in, and the roof is a reverse gable. So part of the reason that you're picking up a lot of this square footage is this roof wouldn't have been used, but it comes out to here. And then the question becomes, okay, well, they built the lanai, or they could build the lanai that was there. But this particular area here, which is the second floor of the primary master suite, goes out over the first floor, or goes out over the existing foundation. So that's one thing to consider. When you go to the third criteria, and it says special conditions and circumstances do not result from an action of the applicant. Again, this is somewhat tricky, as it is a big ask. They'll be presenting their case, but a couple of things to consider are is that you have a lot that size-wise meets the R1B zoning, and it is an R1C lot. If this was an R1B zoned lot, this wouldn't be having this conversation. The R1B starts right across the street, pretty much from this, or right down the street from this. And then the last thing that you have is a literal interpretation of the provision of this ordinance would deprive the applicants of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance, and that the variance is the minimum necessary. You can choose to look at whether the circumstances explained by the applicants warrant some relief. The plan did receive very good reviews of the site plan. That's typical of the plans that come in from this particular company. But you have to decide how that applies and whether the square foot is the minimum that you can ask for that. So again, you have, you could move to grant the appeal. You could move to grant the appeal with some modifications, or you could move to deny the variance application that feels to meet the necessary standards for that. I do want to show you one more slide here. When you take a look at this, this area in through here, which is the roof tie-in, which does make all this usable space in here, is a good portion of what that 439 is. And this goes out over here to the chimney, which is at the end of the lanai, and incorporates that wall into the actual structure. So at this point in time, I'm going to keep this up here in case Mr. Abate wants to address any of this, and turn it back over to the chair.
Mr. Abate?
Okay.
Dominic, just let me know what page you want to be on if you do.
Okay, that's great. First off, let me just thank you all for allowing us to be here tonight. Ben Heller, the owner of our company, is typically the one that would handle these meetings. He apologized that he could not be here, it was a family event. And then just to kind of add on to what Hank was presenting to you was that it's our understanding that the zoning districts are set in place with certain guidelines. Now, those guidelines, we feel, kind of handle the general overview of the district and doesn't incorporate every single lot into that. So that's why we're here today. And what I want to, based on what Hank said, with the R1C district that we are in, we are capped for, even though there's an addition for lot cover or lot size to add into the square footage, we're capped. And that does decrease, based on lot size, the amount of square footage we can have by approximately 166 square feet. So I know we're asking for what Hank uses as a kind of excessive amount of square footage. Please keep in mind with the lot being excessively large that we have, we're also missing out on 166 extra feet, just based on the ruling. We do view that this is an unusual lot, and that it is excessively large. It is on a corner, and it is an irregular lot configuration. Now, our view, and how the front, how this being planted off of Pembroke, this is technically our front that you're seeing on the screen here, we view this lot as being a nice bookend to the lot at the end of the street, which is zoned R1B. So we're hoping you'll consider that if this were an R1B, and that we could do this addition, if you were to look at the street as a whole, you'd see these kind of two nicely matching front elevations with the string of smaller lots in between. And that was the approach we wanted to take with this. And as you can see, if you look at the plans... Hank, you want to go to the floor plan?
Lower...
Next one, yeah, right there. So if you can kind of highlight that corner of the dining room and where the lanai meet? Yeah, so right, that outside corner there. We were trying to be very sensitive to the existing architecture of the home. So we stepped the lanai back off that corner to kind of preserve the end of the house that's existing. And that's why we have the step back there, but at the same time, making a greater frontage, again, to kind of mimic the house at the end of the street. Now, this is something that's common with us. We do try to take into account when we do our designs of being sensitive to the current architecture and the neighboring architecture. And again, this is how we came up with this configuration. Now Hank, if you could go back to the site plan for me? One thing, yeah, if you could zoom in a little bit? And there's one thing I'd like to point out, based on my last point, is that if you look at the front setback off Pembroke, you can see that we could potentially build much closer to the street. But again, trying to be sensitive to the neighboring homes, we did step the house back to try to maintain that same setback that's existing to be less impactful on the, on the neighborhood. No, okay. There are some large trees that are also going to be in front of this addition. Right, is that true?
I think, let me see if I might be able to, I think I know where you're going with that. The large trees that are out there shield the proposed addition from view from Pembroke. And as a result, even though it may be a little bit larger than what would be allowed, it won't really be anything that would be like, is a predominant feature of the house. It would be not only tastefully done architecturally, but it would also be done with trees, which would help mitigate the appearance. And they've done a good job of mass and scale and size on this, as evidenced by the planning commission unanimous approval. But also with the trees, it would also look like it was less than what it is. And I think one of the other things too, that Dominic was saying, is that I just want to point out, typically lots in this zone district start at 7,000, 8,000, 9,000 square feet. 7,000 square feet is an R1C lot. So the seven to eight, with the nine is what's considered the R1C lot. A nine is considered a R1B lot. This lot comes in, it's over 16,000 square feet. So as a result, I think what Mr. Abate's point is, is that this is considered an outlier, or he would like this to be considered an outlier, because it's actually the size of two R1C lots. The original configuration of the house on the lot is something that he can't address, and also the architecture is something that he can't address. They want to put an addition on the side. They feel that this is the most logical place for it. The architectural design feels like it's a fit, based on the planning commission recommendation to approve, subject to the zoning board of appeals. They've made it architecturally sensitive. And even though it's a big ask as far as the square footage, they feel that they've mitigated it by their design and the location on the lot. So I'm sorry, Mr. Abate, if you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Thank you for that. And I did, again, trying to play off of the whole kind of matching bookends on the street. 25816 Pembroke, which, which is the house at the opposite end, is again zoned in R1B. And that lot is approximately 12,500 square feet, which we have approximately 3,600 square feet more to our property size. If you kind of take a look at the average on that street of house square footage to lot size, it appears that they, the average is roughly around 30% of house square footage to the lot size. With, again, the excessively large lot that we have, even with our addition, we're looking at roughly 25% of the lot being taken up by square footage.
Where is this house, lot at the end of the street that he's being referred to?
So 25816? Is there a zoning map or anything we can view, or?
I don't think I have one on here, but...
We have a survey that shows Pembroke.
Yeah.
Is it further...
It's at the other end of Pembroke.
Heading this way?
Heading towards Hendry.
So it's like, not next door, it's all the way up?
No, it's at the south end of the block.
It's at the south end of the block.
And we're viewing...
At the corner of Hendry.
So the lot right...
This happens at Lincoln Pembroke, right?
That's correct.
It is.
It's at the other end of the block.
They look at them going north-south.
How is the lot right next door on this survey? It's not fully shown. Is that an R1C also?
That is also an R1C lot.
And how about the house on Lincoln on this side?
That is also an R1C lot. You mean the house behind it to the east of it?
All right, so it's not the case that if this lot was zoned on Lincoln, instead of Pembroke, it would be R1B?
No, that's not the case. The case would be is that the square footage of this lot in comparison to the surrounding neighbors makes it an outlier, because it's almost double the size of most other lots in that area.
So we had a case like this a couple of years ago on Hendry.
Do you want me to turn the lights back on? Are we, we're done with that?
Also a very large lot. And we came to this determination that the people were being essentially deprived of the right to an appropriately sized house on a lot. Based upon lot size, and that feels the same way here. It's an excessively large lot. Your lot coverage is not going to be excessive at all, based upon, you know, third of the neighbor. So I personally don't see an issue with this. And I think it's not granted there, being deprived of it. The jointest rights of the neighborhood stuff. Yeah, fortunately speaking.
Right.
Where are we proceeding?
Well, we can discuss, or I was going to open up public participation, and then we can discuss. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on this? That's here.
I think they're here for the next appeal.
Seeing no one, I will close public participation. I don't think that...
I kind of agree with your comment in the sense that it's clear that the impact, looked at in isolation, is reasonable. Given the size of the lot and the screening, and even the percentage of the increased square feet over the permitted square feet, if you look at it on a percentage basis relative to the size of the lot to start with, it's not that much. You know, it's if you had a 6,000, or 7,000, or 8,000 square foot lot, and then were putting this addition on, which would be enormous. So in a kind of substantive way, it doesn't matter. But we're starting with a law, and I'm trying to figure, figure that out.
Only good that I think what was the intent, when they made this law, the intent was to prevent Bigfoot houses, oversized houses on undersized lawns.
It seems like what you really have here is an argument that this lot is wrongfully zoned R1C. Really fundamentally, what should the request, which is extremely hard to achieve, particularly for an isolated lot, would be to rezone it as R1B? And that's the argument being that the Heller organization here is making, really.
Yes.
The argument I'm making, I agree with that. But unfortunately, it'd be a sort of a spot rezoning, because it's not next to a contiguous district that has the same characteristics.
Well, the house to the west, immediate west, I'm just trying to get my bearings here. That, that's, the address is, it's 8315 Lincoln, I think everybody still has here. That's almost 5,000 square feet. Is that zoned, is that...
That's also, no, that's also zoned R1C. So you can see that there's a substantial difference between the lot sizes. And I guess that, that works in...
Is that like a non-conforming, because it's that size before the...
When you zone, you can't take like a block and make it like piano prints. So what you do is you take the bulk of what it is that you do, with the understanding that there's going to be an outlier or two. There may be one smaller, or in this case, there may be one that's substantially larger. So basically, what they do is they take it and they put it into like an R1C configuration in this case, with the understanding that if something comes along and it warrants relief from the zoning board of appeals, that they're welcome to come here and make their case and ask for relief from the zoning board of appeals, predicated on some kind of practical difficulty that runs with the land or the structure on the land.
But the language, Hank, is very fundamental question. By, since most of the R1C lots are smaller, then I'm not quite sure how we interpret that the situation of their lot is such that they don't enjoy the benefits of other lots in their district, because clearly they do. Well, you know, and it's also clearly self, I mean, self-created in the sense that they just want a bigger house, fundamentally, for maybe very good reasons. We don't judge whether somebody's plan is great or not. That's like the planning commission does. I think the, I mean, I just say, try to, so we can make some progress. I mean, I'd say that my, probably would support the variance. My feeling is to support the variance, because it, what you really have is a lot that isn't zoned right, but we can't rezone it.
No, you have the outlier that you were talking about.
And I think the progress of, the process we've gone through for a number of years now is, in one way or another, to give special exceptions to very large lots, where the restrictions on developing those very large lots don't quite accord with the nature of a very large lot, but we're adopted for a smaller piece of property. So if we accept this variance, in a way, we're giving kind of an honorary rezoning, so to speak, to a lot like this, which is in the wrong district, but can't really move into the right district, which is R1B. And, you know, if we live with that, I think you're going to have a number of people who'll come back with large lots. We're going to make one category, one form another of the same argument, and probably we would have to agree.
And to the extent that that happens, if somebody comes in with a zoned district where a lot is normally 7,000 square feet, they happen to have 16,000 square feet, that may also warrant it. So that's, that's up to a general practice. Of course, each case is on its own merits. And this here before you tonight, that's, and correctly if I'm wrong, but that's the bulk of their case, is that because they are an outlier and because they have substantive square feet way over and above the neighborhood, that they're, they're being treated the same when perhaps they shouldn't be. And that's...
I agree. I think, actually, I think the way the ordinance is written is probably flawed. And it should have been written as a percentage of square feet, not, you know, 320 square feet in this zoning, but, you know, X percent of your lot size.
We've always had maximum house sizes, and they've always been approached in different ways. And again, unfortunately, it's the zoning board of appeals' job to take a look at it and see whether they feel that, so...
Well, why did they have that? Why did somebody sit down and write that ordinance the way it's written?
Because it's not the right ordinance.
Right, but I mean, they did it with the intent of not, they were not taking a 50-foot lot like mine and going to the very absolute, you know, as you can hear your neighbors. But if we approve this, are we going against the intent of the ordinance? In my interpretation, we are not. But I have just one question.
I did have one comment, and it's a different question, actually.
Go ahead.
So one thing I noticed is that we're not, this design does not infringe on, get any closer to Pembroke, and I think that's important.
Correct.
The zoning laws, one of the things I think it does is it guarantees a certain amount of green space, both front of the house and house in between houses. And I think this does preserve it. The question I did have is, it's showing us 460 square feet. I'd just like a little better understanding of why the lanai, if it isn't closed, is not part of, is not added into that?
It's not heated space, so it's not conditioned space. So it's a, it's a porch with sliding screen doors on it.
A covered porch.
Yeah, covered porch.
It's sort of arbitrary, right? It's still like, human occupied enclosed space, but by the... You should get the benefit of where it falls in your favor.
It would be here with a different number if that was heated and conditioned.
Okay.
And is it, is it, I mean, whether this matters ultimately, not. The four, oh, Britton is asking for an extra 400, but is it really more like 100 and something with some allowances that you alluded to? I sort of...
No.
No, it's four.
It's not. Okay, that's kind of based on if you were to take...
Yeah. And I think the make, the macro is, it like, relative to the total lot. If you're just want the best fraction that tells the story is the denominator of the total lot size and the way that it's situated to be thoughtful to the street's...
I think also one of the points that Mr. Abate would probably like to make is that even if this was an R1B, you would have an exceptionally large lot for R1B. So even if the lot and the house size and everything was bigger, you would still have a bigger lot that would normally be in that zone district. So as a result, when it's in the lesser zone district, it goes to their theory about how that it's really restrictive in that particular situation. So as a result, when it's in the lesser zone district, it goes to their theory about how that it's really restrictive in that particular situation.
Hank, can you remind me if I voted on this, uh, plan?
You did, uh, you did not, so that you could vote here.
Okay, thanks. And if, if I understand this correctly, the, if it was the lai only without the upstairs space, this would not be?
This would not be here.
Are you sure? So they could have the lai without approval of all the?
Yeah, they could have the lai. It's a space above. Yeah, yes.
It would be only a square foot, last, last square foot.
Yeah, at that point, it's a lot coverage issue and they're nowhere near.
So it's really about the second floor.
That's correct.
Looking for a motion? I'll go ahead and motion it. Hank, put some nice words together here on these. I can make a motion to grant the appeal for variances for Helen Associates on behalf of the Frank family eighty two fifty one Lincoln to the maximum house size. Section forty dash four point oh three, R dash one A through R dash one E. One family districts schedule regulations which allows for thirty six hundred seventy five square feet. They're asking for a total of forty one hundred fourteen square feet, four hundred thirty nine square feet more than allowed. As the request generally meets the requirements for a variance and the appellate has sufficiently demonstrated a requirement.
Or we, we discuss? What do we?
I think the square footage is wrong.
You need the second to discuss.
Okay, I will, I will second it for the purpose of discussing the square footage. And that's wrong?
Perhaps this redrawn is the request.
It's four hundred thirty nine square feet more. The addition is four hundred.
It's a different.
It's more than wow.
They, they don't need that.
Yeah, the addition is not the exact number of the rest.
The petitioner took the position that they, with bonuses and allowances, they needed three eighty nine square feet.
Yeah.
Well, so, right, not four hundred and so on.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Yeah.
So I had the allowable maximum with all character bonuses and everything at, uh, was it thirty seven twenty five? I'm still asking for the same forty one fourteen, but with all the character bonuses and lot size bonus. That thirty seven twenty five really should have been thirty six seventy five, which is where the difference comes in.
And that's the number that we hit and that's why we hit the four thirty.
All right, I can't get the motion, just reflect the full.
You could reflect the full amount not to exceed forty one fourteen, that's.
Thank you. Should we amend that? Just?
Yeah, in that case, I'll make, I'll make a motion to amend the previous motion to a total square footage of forty one hundred fourteen square feet.
And then the second's gonna have to accept that.
All right, the second's the majority motion. The motion has been noted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The next item on the agenda, matter of an appeal from, matter of an appeal from Thomas and Lisa Kelly, two five one three nine, East Roy Court. For a variance from section forty dash four point oh three, R dash one A through R dash one B, one of the district scheduled regulations. To exceed the maximum lot covered by twenty three square feet. More is yours.
Hi, this is Jason from Wayne Craft and we're requesting twenty three additional, or twenty three square footage. For to build a rear patio cover off the side of a garage. Uh, just as a nice place for doesn't have to keep his things under umbrellas that tend to tip over. Growl out all the furniture, no need to put those cushions away when it starts to precipitate a little bit. Uh, this is a common patio cover that we use. It's very quiet, kind of modern, so it goes with the aesthetic of the home. It will not be enclosed. It'll just stay as a permanent patio cover off the side of the garage. Again, it's only basically like a additional five by five space of square footage is what we're asking for. Just to build and install this awning.
Thanks, Hank.
Yes, please. Um, just for a point of clarification, if I can ask Mr. Kelly, is your house at?
Sorry, sorry, we gotta break a little.
Somebody moved Ben away from him. Um, so basically, Mr. Kelly, just for a point of clarification, is your house one of the ranches that are on Roy Court?
Yeah, it's right in the middle of.
Okay, so one of the things that you take into consideration is special unique conditions and circumstances that exist which are peculiar to land structure or building involved. Which are not generally applicable to other land structures or building in the same district. So here you run into a situation where we've seen this before and the zoning board of appeals has addressed this. When you have a lot that has a ranch on it, you inherently have a higher percentage of lot coverage. Because what you normally might have on two floors, Mr. Kelly has on one. So the lot covers more square footage. Also, if you take a look at the photo that we have up here, and let me just do this so that I can.
Is that the proposed?
That's the proposed.
That's the, that's the existing.
Oh, that's the existing.
Temporary.
Yeah, so the proposed here, let me go to this. This is what they're looking at for proposed and you're looking at a twenty two by thirteen awning that comes over in the same location as shown in here. And this is why this is important. If you take a look at this, this is the same area that's going to come in. And again, perhaps Mr. Kelly can elaborate, how much further forward will that come on that garage? Will it cover the door?
It'll cover the door and that, that's the key. That, that was why we needed the variance because we wanted to have it where it came up over the door. So you could go in and out of the garage without.
And have some protection. The other point that you can see here too is, is that if you have this here and you come forward. This area here, which is currently covered, this area here is not. So you already have the patio. The question is whether they can cover it from here to here. So that's one of the questions that you have. So the variance, uh, the second criteria is the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the general welfare. I've had no adverse communications from anybody in the neighborhood on this point. And then three, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. The plan was drawn to exceed code, yes, but this is tempered with the fact that even though this is a self-created standard. That Mr. Kelly is owner of a ranch, which has by nature a higher percentage of lot coverage than other types of homes in Huntington Woods. And even in the same zone district. So that's one of the things that you want to take a look at there. And then four, there's a standard that says a literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicants of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district. Under the terms of this ordinance, that the variance is the minimum necessary. Um, you're looking at twenty three square feet, so you need to decide if that's the minimum necessary. It's not a huge ask, but it is an ask nonetheless. So when you have that type of thing, it plays into the fact that is he asking for something that other people have? Will he be denied something that other people have? If he had a two-story house, which is common in that area, also there's a lot of ranches in that area. If this was a two-story house, Mr. Kelly wouldn't be here this evening. Because a lot of his square footage would be served on top of that, so he would have about half of what he's looking at now. So having said that, um, again, I'll ask if they, I'll, I'll turn it back over to the chair if they want to have anything else. The only other things that we want to show you is this. This is the type of structure. You can see on the bottom that it's just simply a structure that's attached. These are the specs which you have all been furnished with and you can take a look at that. And I think this is probably the most telling story right here. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as I'm sure Mr. Kelly would. Other than that, I'm gonna ask Ben to play with the lights.
I'm gonna open it up, public participation if they don't have any questions. First, unless I want to say anything else to add. I'm gonna open it up to public participation. Seeing, hearing nobody, I'm gonna close public participation, open it up to discussion amongst the board.
I was posting the concrete to the grass.
The area is in concrete. That, that was part of the reason. So we're gonna increase.
So there's no rat waller, there's no rat waller foundation there now. Uh, let me look at my.
So I'm just wondering if, are the posts gonna be here or the posts gonna be here?
It'll be in the grass, just front of the desk.
So you're still just covering it. Okay, yeah.
So the temporary structure goes away and permanent structure gets filled out?
Does the concrete also get extended?
No, it's just, um, so what we end up doing is just like installing like a basketball net pole or a fence post. Is that, we're going to do like, you know, fourteen inches diameter, forty two inches deep. Uh, we stop the cement usually about two inches below the surface. At that point, the dirt just goes over the back of it and then becomes grass again. So you're not gonna have like an extension of the patio being built up further than what it is. We're basically just gonna hide those piers in the ground, the gas grill. The, the grass will just germinate again. Comes spreading out just like the yard.
The new roof will go past the edge of the concrete?
Correct.
How far into the grass?
Uh, one foot.
One foot, that's just enough for the post.
Yeah.
Would it be usable as a car park?
No, uh, because of the location of the garage and the private being.
Everyone else.
Yeah, it's not, except the car.
Turn, turn, yeah. I mean, you could probably drift into it.
It's about.
Sure.
It's small car.
Yeah, it would be almost impossible.
It's car, just gas car.
And it won't be enclosed.
Knocked down all the garden furniture.
The picture just.
Not in my lifetime when you're.
Guess what I'm searching for here is uh, something that meets our criteria.
I think the, the argument, Hank is making the argument that this is, that many homes in this district would not have decision to tear two stories or more. And that there's a handicap that a ranch house, because we're using up a lot of, lot for a basic structure. So that if we want to apply a sort of similar reasoning as in our last appeal, we could do it here on the basis that this is a ranch. I, I, I do have a question though. But what is the percentage by which granting this twenty three foot variance would cause the lot coverage to exceed the permitted amount?
The percentage?
You know, like how much in excess of the permitted lot coverage would this cost?
Oh, probably like point.
It, it would be like a fraction of one quarter.
Point percent, you know.
But since it's already cement, isn't the lottery card?
No.
No, there's two things. There's a rear yard lot coverage and there's a total yard lot coverage. They need the total yard lot coverage. And this additional twenty three square feet on this particular lot would come out to, I would, my approximation would be less than one percent, like less than.
It's really just where the roof covers the grass.
Exactly.
I mean, it's approximately nothing. It's good to figure here.
The reason I raise this, Mr. Chairperson, is that we denied an appeal in our last meeting for someone who had a pergola. Uh, they built it already without a permit. They had a pergola that added on top of the existing lot coverage variance, another, you know, substantial percent. And we deny. So I think we have to ask ourselves, when you're faced with an appeal like this, can we deny this lot coverage and not that one?
But are they over lot coverage currently?
They're not over lot coverage.
They were. They had a variance for their overage.
Yeah.
And they were coming back for another variance for more overage.
They also didn't have the same condition of variance.
Right, that's right. I just sort of turned it.
And I think.
My other argument is we have to be a little careful with, that we're not, they're arbitrary and just, you know, swaying back and forth from appeal to appeal. I, I tend to feel there's enough of a difference, starting with the fact that this is a really minimal.
The ask is not big. I mean, it's.
I'm surprised you're here.
I, I.
Most people just build.
Yeah.
Then they run into permits.
Yeah, not recommended.
No, good you're here. Even to be here. Gone to a variance before on two occasions for twenty two five feet or three inches to a zoning variance.
And that's, you know, it either is or it isn't. And at that point in time, once it crosses that line, it becomes a province of the zoning board of appeals. And even though staff may or may not want to just say, yeah, it's close enough. We don't have the authority to do that, so.
And this seems like.
You do and that's why Mr., that's why Mr. Kelly's here.
Essentially minimum necessary when you, if that's, when you take the totality of the circumstance.
I would say it meets the Huntington Woods standard.
Oh.
There are zoning boards of appeals that would agonize over a half of a foot variance and some would deny. And, you know, this is a case where you could, I believe, that if we stretch and follow our general doctrine, which is trying to give a break to people. Whose lots don't quite fit the, the core of the zoning rationale, that this would fit that. Plus it has the advantage of being a very small request, but you can't just, even though we approved one recently on the grounds that it was small. That's not really a criterion for approving it on itself. Or that could make you feel angry toward the.
It's a prong of, in terms of the, you know, the relative size and proportion, which I think is. I would describe as minimum necessary to achieve your reasonable use of your.
But Ben, the fact by approving this and, and accepting Hank's rationale, it would be giving an opening to every ranch in this district to have a little extra lot cover.
Well, we, we consider these on a case by case basis and it's not just like if we want to go home or not.
It's not a question. It means the next person has some precedent on their side.
Again, when you're looking at these, there would be difference in the cases. So for example, Mr. Kelly's asking for twenty three square feet. If the same person came in with the same exact lot size and the same twenty three square feet and the same ranch house, then maybe you do want to give it to them. If somebody comes in and they have a two-story house and they're still way over their lot coverage, that may be another change in the factor. So I think that you could, if you choose to, make the case that this has some unique circumstances. And as a result, you could do this without worrying about setting a precedent because even though there's ranches. And I know, for example, that some of you on the board have ranches. You know that there's a lot of good things with ranches and there's also a lot of, you know, a lot that you have to do. For example, if you want to get from the entry door to the, to the laundry room with the.
Well, I have to mention in the cost of the roof.
Exactly. So, you know, there, there is a difference. But it says that from experience.
No, I, I just, oh, I, I support this for the rationale you gave. I'm just pointing out that, I mean, you could play around with, you know. Somebody came with twenty five feet, it's not the same, but it is.
That's, that's up to you to decide.
We're sort of progressively over there is working on a doctrine about certain characteristics of the way lots have been developed. Or the size of lots, or whether it's a ranch or two-story, where we're, we're heavily interpreting the purpose of the zoning.
I, I think it's a healthy doctrine. I don't, and I don't think it's, I think if, if there's a slippery slope case out there, this isn't.
I think it's a better job to interpret the zoning board.
I think.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we're in a very aggressive position, I hope, in my personal opinion, because we're in favor of people fixing, you know, improving the property. Staying in their homes.
Yes.
It's, it's, that's our net, but the Huntington Woods fair. So it's a editorial comment, but.
Yeah, so you'd be glad you'll remember. You're really only spending three thousand square feet.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant, approve the appeal, sorry, from Thomas and Lisa Kelly at twenty five one three nine East Roy Court. For the variance from section forty dash four point oh three, R one A through R one E. One family district schedule regulations to exceed the maximum lot coverage by twenty three square foot. As it generally meets the requirements for dimensional variance and a practical difficulty of pinestea. Lights a second. All in favor?
Aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you guys. I appreciate it very much. They're not being many car.
Any other business?
At this point in time, um, I do want to point out that, uh, just to let you know, some of you have seen my email. Um, Gordon Glidden, who has been a longtime zoning board of appeals member and a longtime planning commissioner for the city of Huntington Woods. commissioner for the city of Huntington Woods, has unfortunately passed away after a long illness. There will be a memorial, memorial for him at the Iroquois Club Friday, October 22nd at 5:00 PM, for those of you that would like to go. If you need any other information, please feel free to email me. Gordon will surely be missed on boards and commissions. He's like a lot of you that take a lot of pride and time, willing to devote a lot of time to serving their community and, you know, it's, it's an unfortunate situation and unfortunate loss. So if any of you would like to go ahead and would like some more information on it, please feel free to email me. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Hank. I'm going to open it up to public participation, seeing nobody, us here, I'm going to close public participation and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Josh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Hank.